Good evening, everybody. I'm Jeff Swett and I am the vice chairperson, which is why I am talking. And Kevin Bruggele, who is away for the evening and unavailable, who is the chairperson, is not here talking. So it is my pleasure to be your chair for the evening. And we will stand now for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There will be a written record of this meeting, thanks to Jamie. And there will be a video of an audio of this meeting, thanks to CCTV and Noah behind the wall. We can begin with public participation. Would anybody like to come and speak to the committee? Seeing none, we will move on to good news. Does anybody have any good news? Thank you, April.
I don't know if everyone will consider it good news, but I pulled papers for reelection today, so if anybody's interested in signing them for me, that's a Wareham resident and registered voter, please let me know. Thank you.
Glad to hear you're doing it.
Thank you.
Let's see. I guess I do recall, since I get the power rankings every week or thereabouts, that we are still number one in Division Four for boys' basketball. We have slipped a little in girls' basketball down to, I think, about number 42, but they get to go to the playoffs as long as they have a winning record, and they have a very winning record. So they can at least anticipate one playoff game, which is always very exciting and makes the season that much more fun for the team and the coaches. I think that's it, but more important and with much better information, will be our student representative. But we're supposed to talk about all those meetings first, so Gisella, you're next up. Let's move on to the minutes of, let's see, November 16th, December 7th, December 21st, January 4th, and January 18th.
Motion to accept.
Jamie, you've been busy. Thank you.
Seconded.
We have a motion to accept and a second. Any discussion at all about the minutes? I did read them. They were, as usual, well done. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? 4-0-0. Okay. Now, Gisella, you're up.
Okay. So during the last few weeks of school, semester one has ended with half of the school year behind us, which is very exciting. Starting off with clubs, as usual, Mr. Masso has started a crocheting day after school on Thursdays and has had a good turnout of both pros and students who are interested in learning.
We would like to see some evidence of that, by the way.
Okay. AV Club has been working on their next morning news show, with their next one coming out next week. DECA has been very busy getting ready to host their masquerade ball. The theater department has just cast our spring musical of You're a Good Man, Charlie Brown, and has started rehearsals for our regional performance of our festival play. Tomorrow, Key Club will be starting our annual prom dress collection. We will be accepting dresses from February 2nd to the 15th, and we'll be accepting donations at the front desk. We are planning to give these dresses away during lunch and after school.
That's outstanding. How many dresses do you normally get?
Around 30.
Whoa.
Yeah.
Awesome. That's great.
It's quite impressive. Seniors have just voted on their class trip options. We have just started a new fundraiser to help pay off of our senior class dues and the cost of the field trip. And then, on a more academic standpoint, from tonight, from 6:00 to 8:00, there is a hybrid informational night for 9th through 11th graders and their families who are interested in AP, IB, and dual enrollment classes. The upcoming, there's an upcoming FAFSA night on Tuesday from 6:00 to 8:00 to help parents, for free, fill out their FAFSA information along with their students.
Which is huge, because it's not easy.
It is. It is not. And UMass Dartmouth On the Spot Decision Day is tomorrow, and students are excited for that. And lastly, Bristol Community College will be having a On the Spot Decision Day on February 6th for students as well. That is all.
Yeah, student debt. That's a trillion-dollar issue. Good luck with that. Okay. Yes?
Gisella, did you say that you voted on the senior trip? Did we, was that not the trip to New York City? Am I confused?
It is the trip to New York City. It's what the students are going to be doing in New York City.
Oh, okay.
What were their results?
They just were in today, so we don't know the results quite yet.
No, 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 no. Wait a minute. We voted to approve that trip, correct?
Yes.
Okay. We might take away that approval if we knew you were going to do something outrageous. So can you, can you come back and talk to us about what you decided you were going to do?
I'll come back after.
She'll bring photos.
Exactly. When you come back from the trip, we'll have to know what you did.
Exactly.
Photos?
Yes.
Okay. During and after?
After.
Only after?
After.
Okay. You have a lot of-
On the ride back.
Well, you have a lot of witnesses that you're going to do that, you know?
Yes.
Okay. Fine. Are you all set?
I am.
I just wanted to make one comment. I'm excited to hear that they're doing You're a Good Man, Charlie Brown, because many years ago, Wareham High did You're a Good Man, Charlie Brown, and I was Charlie Brown. So I'm looking forward to seeing it.
I think you'll be very pleased with our Charlie Brown. They are an amazing actor.
I'm excited for it. I'm going to definitely go see it.
The whole cast is quite impressive.
Do you have video proof that you were Charlie Brown?
Yes, you will never see it.
It might be in the WCTV archive.
It is. Don't go look it up.
Thank you, Gisella. The principals' reports. Please, join us. Who wants to go first? Tracy wants to go first.
I can wait first.
Good evening.
Good evening. Is anyone coming now? All right. I thought they all saw. Yes. Wareham Middle School. Good evening. Attendance rate for students is 93%. I know I keep saying the same thing, but I keep checking it twice, and it's still 93%. For January, staff attendance rate was 95%. Some good news for Wareham Middle School, the Bluefoot Cafe. We have our art exhibit up and ready to go, so if you go in tomorrow to the Bluefoot Cafe, you will see all of our students' artwork displayed.
How long will it be up?
It's up for the whole month of February, and they're having a huge kickoff, I'd say, on Saturday, so.
It's a nice cafe.
Yes. Yes. Report cards for Term Two went out this week, so those are, the honor roll is in the newspaper already. And we have a high honors breakfast coming up on, I forgot to write the date down, but it's the February, the Thursday before February break, and parents will be getting letters in the mail for that. So some exciting things happening at Wareham Middle School, and as was already said, half of the year is already over, which is unimaginable, but questions, concerns for Wareham Middle School? All right, thank you.
Just one quick question. You talk about report cards. How do report cards go home now? Do they still go home in paper form with students?
We do send ours home paper form, so parents have 24 hours access to, seven days a week to Power School. They can see grades live.
Right.
But we do feel that it's still important for parents to see it, sign it, and bring it back with our little ones.
Okay.
So we do send a paper copy home with students, and they have to come back signed. And if they don't come back signed, an administrator or counselor will call home and say, "Did you see it?"
Oh, okay.
So, and we do progress reports still, too. So halfway in between the term, we just want to keep on top of that.
So your return rate is high?
100%, eventually.
Okay.
Yes, it is forced.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good question.
Okay. Wareham Elementary School. Well, our attendance rate remains pretty much the same. It's 92% for students and 91% for faculty, staff. Upcoming events and things that have been happening at Wareham Elementary. We've began a tutoring group on Friday, so I am looking out for tutors, if anybody's interested. We have three tutors right now, which include myself, Dr. Russo, and Ms. Nault, and we have 18 students, and these are students who are on the cusp of yellow, they're in the yellow zone right now, and we're working with them on Fridays just to beef up their math and ELA work. And it's been a lot of fun teaching again. Speaking of report card, we just started our report card committee. It's part of our school improvement plan to look at the report card. We have an excellent array of committee members, including grade levels, parents, I brought the school council as well, as well as technology, to see if we may look at an online component. So we have begun that. In other news, coming up, events coming up, February 6th marks the 100th day of school. So traditionally, the first grade marches around with their 100th day song, their 100th day vest with 100 items on the vest, and that's coming up February 6th. We have our winter concert, February 8th. That's at 6:00 PM from 4th grade for the singing and the musical instruments that Mr. Hart does such a great job on. And February 15th is our Hall of Presidents from 5:30 to 7:30, and that's when the first and second grade, Ms. Harunk's class and Ms. Allen's class put on their presentation of their autobiographies of being presidents. And I remember some school committee members there last year.
I was there this year. A very fun event.
And it's a very fun event. It's really great. And you just, the costumes, just to see the young ones in the costumes with their, you know, whether it be a raccoon that they're holding or something that's an emblem of their, their president. And they have to memorize it. They memorize their script. I always learn something. Yeah, something new. The prop is always different, so that's what's enjoyable. And curriculum-wise, I just wanted to bring to our attention two things. I just wanted to highlight the art teachers. They've been doing some really cool things. The latest, I don't know if you've seen it on Facebook, but I welcome anybody to come to our 3D globe, and we've-
That is so cute.
So come for a photo op. Dr. DeAndrea has his, he's in the snow globe.
Did he fit in the snow globe?
Yes, because it's been-
It's really big.
-created as a 3D image, so our students have been having so much fun with it and seeing each other, and they're just, you know, pretending that they're in the class, so kudos. It's a great culture builder. Our teachers get in the globe, our staff, we all do different photos, and we're putting them all around, so I invite all of you to be part of our snow globe. And thank you to Mr. Tricker and Ms. Newton for putting this on, because it's a lot of fun. And finally, I'm going to leave. I thought it would be interesting if the school committee was, so I brought each of you a workbook. This is one-
Give him homework.
I did. I am. This is where it is. Just to, we're always trying to highlight a part of curriculum, so tonight I wanted to highlight the knowledge component of CKLA, which is our reading program. So I've brought for you four different workbooks. You choose what you'd like to look at, of the Grade Three, basically sequence of units, beginning with Animal Classifications, The Human Body, The Ancient Roman Civilization, and Light and Sound. And these are the workbooks that students use. There's also reading resources. But I thought that it would be neat for all of you to review it, because what you'll see in this is not just reading comprehension or writing, but there's also parts of speech that they put in within the knowledge, so this is my gift for this evening. And I've bookmarked just a few features to each of the books, but I wanted to give that to each of you, so you can look a little bit at what our students are learning. And I just chose Grade Three because I happen to have the most workbooks in it. They're right on my hands here, and they are in the center. Yes, no, they might have to take them back, or you have to work on them.
Put them on the delist.
That's right.
We have a budget.
So just to be clear, are these workbooks completely independent of Chromebooks?
Yes. Separate.
Interesting.
And there's novels, and there's a whole online component-
As well.
-in this program. It's very rich.
Libraries and bookstore will be happy to hear that.
Yes. Yes. Yep. And so it's, it's a nice feature because it's paper, it's paper pencil here in this part, in this practice.
Questions?
Oh, we get to choose? How do I choose? Third-grade knowledge. I probably don't remember anything from third grade.
I started as a third grader.
I'm going to go with, I'm going to go with my Italian roots and take the Roman Civilization.
So I forget, you recall there's a policy that whenever the staff attendance is lower than the students' attendance, they run laps, and I'm just curious-
That's right.
-how that's working out.
We're, we're working on running, but some of us can't run anymore, so we're working on it.
Okay. Well, back in fifth grade, yours truly wrote a lot of sentences, so, you know, "I will not do this," you recall those sentences.
Yes. Oh, I remember those.
I'm not, oh, yes.
"I will not tip in my chair."
That's a whole nother story, which I'm not telling tonight. Mr. Palladino?
Yes. So overall attendance for the students was 92%. Overall attendance for the staff was 95%. Some school events, I know Gisella mentioned a lot of these, but I just want to reiterate some of these. Semester Two classes have now started. Report cards were issued last week. Course selection for the 2024 to 2025 school year happened all last week, the presentations. She mentioned the UMass Dartmouth On the Spot Admissions on Friday. We just finished our AP, IB, dual enrollment night. We had about 45 parents there, so we were very happy with that, both online and in person. Very happy with that. If you're bored, I know you have a lot of homework, but Saturday night is the masquerade ball. We're always looking for chaperones from 7:00 to 10:00 PM. Gisella mentioned the FAFSA night, February 6th, at 6:00 PM. We have an early release coming up on the 7th. Bristol Community College On the Spot Day, February 7th. Our honors breakfast is going to take place on February 12th for Grades 8 and 9, and on February 13th for Grades 10 through 12. We have a parent support group meeting on February 12th at 4:30. Our Athletic Boosters is meeting on the 12th at 5:30. And of course, we are not too far away from February vacation on the 19th through the 23rd. Some initiatives that we are continuing to work on. Our Viking Block enrichment period gives students the opportunity to select teachers to go through, to go to during advisory, and we have an app that they use, and they can self-select, so a lot of student choice. That's going really well, especially at the end of the term. But we're at the beginning of the term, so it's, it's all is good. We are, as you heard, we have a parents' night. We're continuing to work with Effective School Solutions to work with our, our students and families in the TLC program. Today, we had a visit from Desi, and we had an awesome opportunity to go into some of our English classes and take a look at the teachers utilizing our StudySync program, and that is going really well. Next year, we're going to kind of switch gears and focus more on the math with the, with the department, and, but our math department is rolling out and has rolled out illustrative math, which is going really well. Our Student Support Council continues to meet every other week to identify students that need support. We have tiered levels of support that we provide our students that are struggling. And we have joined forces with the other schools in the district to jump on the New Year assessments, and we have given two assessments so far this year, with one more to come in the spring. So just some initiatives that we have been working on to enhance the learning. Certainly entertaining. Any questions you may have?
Wait, I got to read my scratchy handwriting here. The Viking Block, when they pick the teachers to go to, is that for extra help?
Correct.
It's not just, okay.
The, the goal is it's for extra help. The reality is, not every student needs extra help, but there are a percentage of students that do need that help.
Well, no, that opportunity is great.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. And Desi, were they here specifically to see the use of that StudySync?
And the Inclusive IB, because it's the grant. They also provided us for the different courses we, the StudySync, the Core, and the Inclusion IB were the three reasons we received the grant. So they came and saw those three classes. Oh, sorry.
They came to those three classes-
Okay.
-that are related to the grant.
Okay. So you're still running Core Math and Core English?
We are running it, and it's, it's going really well. We're really excited that the kids have the supplemental math and English that they need.
Okay, great. And just one more question, and hopefully this is something you'll talk about in the future, is the cell phone committee?
Yes.
So is that-
It's actually ironically on the school council agenda.
Oh, it is? Oh, all right. Okay, good.
And then, we, but let me talk a little bit about it. They have met about a dozen times. They, they have-
That's a lot.
That is a lot.
Yeah.
Well, they don't meet for a long period of time, Mr. Swett. It's, it's like, you know, an hour a time. They have investigated various devices that can be used to store the cell phones. They have reached out to five schools to set up site visits to see these devices in use. And it's, it's been interesting, because a lot of schools are very apprehensive to allow us into the building-
Really?
...because some programs aren't going as well as they're being advertised. So-
Cell phone programs?
Cell phone policies, yeah. So we've been kind of dealing with that, so I've had to really get more involved than I thought I would, facilitating these conversations, anyway. But we do have, we're in talks with a few schools, I'll just say that, but we're, we're hoping to actually get through the threshold of the front door. But it's been interesting. So it's, it's interesting, and I'm not on the committee, but I'm supporting them, obviously. It's been interesting to find out that, again, what's in the newspaper or in the websites, not really what's happening behind the doors, but we're, we're working on that. We've got a few more opportunities to at least converse with schools. They're all willing to talk to us, but there's only one school that's willing to allow us in.
I've just noticed schools, much larger schools than Wareham High School, recently putting those policies into place, so again, it doesn't say-
Remember, the policy is only as good as the adherence to the policy.
Right, right.
You may have a policy that looks great in a handbook, but what's really happening, that's really, you know, where the rubber meets the road.
Yeah. All right. Well, I look forward to hearing more.
Definitely.
All right. Thank you.
So you said earlier tonight, you guys had a parent info session on AP, IB, and dual enrollment, so I know you said 45 people attended, which is definitely higher than it has been, I think, in the past, but what were the primary takeaways that you got from the parents that attended? Were they, was it like, you know, that they had heard some of it, that they didn't really know much? What kind of questions or concerns did they seem to bring up in that meeting?
What, what they really want is, is to walk out of there with us telling them where they should put their child. And the takeaways are always, they know a lot about all three programs now. And then the goal is that they'll go home, have a conversation with their child, and pick the program that's best for them, for their child. The parents are very appreciative of all the programs. Most parents, the takeaway was, "I want my kid to do all three." And, and for us-
And they can.
And, and most do.
They do.
In full disclosure, most kids that graduate take at least one semester of dual enrollment and multiple AP and IB course, courses. So it's, they were very appreciative. The takeaways for me were, you know, they just wanted to learn even more than they know. They were excited to go on the college board website. They were excited to see our course of studies online, and, and just to have conversations. And, and I made sure that I wanted them to know, like, you know, you're not buying a car here. If you sign up and later on in the spring, you say, "You know what? I want to do this," we could still make changes. We have a drop ad period in September. You know, we could theoretically change a class then. Obviously, our goal is to educate the students and the parents with enough information that they can make the right decision. We certainly don't want a lot of fluctuation happening once the schedule is set, but we do allow, obviously, for the kids to make the right decision.
Do you also feel that this targeted, was it the parents that you, of students you expected to show up, or were there some parents that you were surprised came to the information session? Because I feel like you know the parents that are involved, that are asking questions, that are meeting with the teachers, that are at everything.
Right.
And I feel like it's that other population that could use the information and may not have made it to the meetings or what other avenues to reach a different, so that it is more all-encompassing for more students.
I would say it was 50/50 on that front. 50% of the parents are the ones we would expect, but there were parents that you'd be like, "Oh, that was pretty cool. That parent showed up." And remember, these are mostly sophomores and juniors, because the senior parents have already heard the presentation, their kids are already enrolled in those courses, so these are more of like the first timers. I mean, we were excited with the number. We sent out multiple emails and voicemails, and, you know, we felt like, you know, that was a good number for us. Certainly, we would have liked to have had 100, but we found by doing it hybrid, you know, we had a lot of people online, which was great. I mean, it's, it's all about getting the message out, what works best for the families, and, you know, it was, for us, it was a really good number, because again, seniors-
And is it something that was recorded? Like, do these, if it's an info session, is it something that, even with the questions being asked, are those then recorded by you guys or by the school or whatever, and then able to be, like, put on the website for, say, a family member that wasn't able to get to it or anything like that?
We put the whole slideshow on the website-
Okay.
-so that they'll have access to it. And, I mean, if anyone has, like we stressed, if you have any questions, please email, call. Like, we want people to have all the information, and even if they, we gave them a, basically a cheat sheet on the way out with the three programs, all the notes that we had. You know, the goal is, if the kid is, and the families are educated, they make the right decision, and then we don't have that fluctuation in the schedule, and then I'm not here in October trying to explain why we're running an AP class with, you know, seven kids. So we, we hope that they make the right decision for the student, and, but again, we, we don't want to lock them in if they're not comfortable.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just had one question, kind of, for all three of you. Assuming that there's parents watching, what would be the one message you would want parents to know of how to help the schools? Like, what, what's the biggest thing parents could be doing to help their students at each grade level?
Checking Power School every other day.
Okay. Or like me, but I was a psycho and checked it, like, seven times a day.
Said every other.
I just tell parents to stay involved. So stay involved in your child's life, know what they're doing after school, check Power School, I say, once a week. But just to be involved, look at what they're doing for homework, and if they're saying they're not doing homework, then why aren't they doing it? I mean, really, you can check Power School 24 hours a day, seven days a week. You can email a teacher, you can email myself, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So I get that parents are working, I was a working mother, but you can literally just pick up your phone and email us. So stay involved, regardless of what grade it is.
Active engagement with, and communication with a teacher on a consistent basis. We welcome volunteers at Wareham Elementary. at Wareham Elementary. Look forward to it. And just that partnership with families is really important.
Okay, thank you.
So Ms. Nolt, is not only a former tennis team member, captain, she also has an MBA. So she's an outstanding tutor. I know she's working to become a permanent teacher, but she's, she's quite a volunteer. So I have two questions for Mr. Palladino.
Yes.
You say you've done NUIA twice.
Yes.
Do you believe it, it aligns pretty well with MCAS?
I do. And that's based more on information from my colleagues. We're, we're just getting started with it. So, but based on their anecdotal evidence and, and just the feedback we've received from the first two assessments, we feel there's really close alignment.
And are you encouraged by the results?
We are. And the teachers are, and more importantly, the students are. They're seeing the growth. What's really cool is we've got data from previous years. So they're able to back that up and, and see the growth over the years. And I think that's motivating for the students. We talked about today, ownership. And I think that, that gives them a little bit, a little bit more ownership in the process that, you know, when you can see that growth, it's exciting. And we hope that as, as we continue into the third assessment, we continue to see the growth. But more importantly, that the kids get excited about what they've done. You know, they're, they're earning this.
The New York Times was, as usual, bemoaning the state of public education. But they were also saying that things have ticked up a little bit. And they, you could literally put in your individual school district into the Times database, and it would show you a graph of how you compared to the nation, the state, et cetera, and over time. And it showed the uptick that we experienced in two thousand twenty-three. And that uptick was better than average. So love to see that continue.
Definitely.
The boosters.
Yes.
I got an urgent, I guess that's the right word, an urgent request for volunteers for the boosters, saying they were close to, you know, literally ceasing to exist. So I found a neighbor, a great neighbor, Jessie Merrick, who you know because she has two wonderful kids in the elementary school, who said, I can do this. I tried to get her to run for school committee. She wanted no part of that. But that's another story. How, how bad is the booster situation?
Well, the, the tough part is we're relying on parents of students that have graduated to, to run the program.
I sent Jessie's.
Yeah.
Contact information to Sam. So just, you know, how many do you need?
It, it's really, the, the tough part is, you know, overall, it'd be great to have two dozen active parents involved. The reality is, and Joyce, you've been involved.
Dozen would be great.
I mean, and the reality is, you know, we don't even have a dozen. So, but it's, I, I think it's important to have, I think two dozen is, is optimal. But obviously, they'll take whatever they can get. We, you know, we, it's great that these parents of graduates are, are giving back. But, you know, it really should be a percentage of those parents with parents that have students active in the high school. And, and I know everyone's busy, but honestly, they would take any help, even if it's like a one-time.
It was like a one virtual meeting a month, I think?
It's not even, yeah, it's.
Or less?
Last time I attended a meeting, there were three of us, and we just didn't have a meeting because there was, there wasn't enough people.
So the, the threat is real?
Oh, it is.
I, I, I think so. And, and, you know, it's always great when you see them giving back to the students in, in so many different ways. And, and it, it doesn't take a lot of time. Like you said, it's one meeting a month.
And it's virtual.
And, and it's, you can do it from home. And then, you know, they have obviously some fundraising activities, football games, things like that. But it, it's, it's awesome. Like, you know, when we do that banquet at the end of the year, and you can feed the family. I mean, things and get the kids a Wareham Viking T-shirt, a sweatshirt. I mean, those things go a long way with student athletes.
All right. Keep us informed. Okay. So I have two generic questions, meaning for all three of you. The first one is, there was a congressional hearing on social media this week.
I saw it.
And one, and one senator, I know who it is, but there's no reason to talk about which, which senator, literally said to Mark Zuckerberg, you have blood on your hands. I think it was, I know he said it to Zuckerberg. My question is, to each one of you, do these social media platforms have blood on their hands? And Gisella, you're happy to weigh in on this question if you'd like.
I, I don't know if they have blood on their hands, but I will.
Yeah, they had cameras on them. So first.
I will, I will tell you that our job has become much more difficult since cell phones and social media have come into play. There are days at the high school that we have to have multiple people on investigations, meetings because of social media. So.
Bullying, harassment, et cetera.
Anything you can imagine. I mean, it, it doesn't happen daily. It sometimes doesn't happen weekly. But sometimes these things can really grapevine off and spiral out of control. But I, I think, you know, we talk about messages to parents. It's, it's know what your kids are doing on social media. Know what they're posting. Know that it stays with the kid beyond the immediate post. Those are things, you know, socially responsible, responsible is, is something that we talk about, being responsible.
Parents obviously can, but don't always play a very important role. If you could change the rules, which is what Congress is being asked to do, how would you change them, all three of you?
I mean, children's brains aren't fully developed. They make poor decisions. Adults make poor decisions on social media, right? Because you can hide behind and.
Anonymity.
Right. And they're not going to say that when they're face to face with someone. And it can get horrible, right? And parents are busy. And that's just one more thing they have to check and do. And it's a scary situation when these children, again, their brains aren't fully developed, and they make poor choices. And our children are spending probably ninety to a hundred percent of their time on social media when they leave school.
I'm, I'm struggling to cope with that percentage.
Well, there's so many different, it's not just Facebook.
No.
There's so many others that I don't know what they are.
No, I'm not any of them, on, on any of them. But I understand they exist.
I talked to a fifth grader this week, and I said, why are you, why are you so tired, honey? And she said, I couldn't sleep. I was on TikTok. I said, till what time? Four this morning. I go, you were on TikTok till four this morning? I mean, and it's their reality. Like, it's just a new, it's a new normal.
I have to say, as someone that scrolls TikTok mindlessly to fall asleep, it tells you, it tells you, I'm on every social media platform. Because I was a social media marketing director in another way. And I, I, I see the good and the bad of it. I see the.
Oh, I definitely think there's good too, but.
But I, I will give it, like, if I'm scrolling, I'm like, if I am lost in time, they have little things that time it and say, looks like you've been scrolling for like an excessive amount of time. Like, you need to go to bed. And I'm always like, oh, crap, I really do. And I shut it off because you do, you lose yourself in these like few minutes of things, home restoration videos and how to organize your pantry. Like, I kept stuck in my algorithm. But it's, it does have, it's just you choose to ignore it.
What can parents do? Limit their children's screen time.
When he brought that up, I, I watched that hearing myself. And I, you know, my personal feelings on that is that it's much more to do with parental involvement. I mean, that, that solves the problem pretty much. I mean, yo, the more, there's all sorts of.
And take it out of the, take it away.
Take it out of the bin.
Get it out of the bin.
So here's my request, and then I'll move on to another topic, which is Congressman Keating, okay? Whatever bill is, gets proposed, he will have a vote, okay? If I was a congressman, I would be much more influenced by getting a letter from a principal of a school than I would be the random, you know, ramblings of a concerned citizen. So if you have the time, know that even a paragraph signed by you as a principal of Wareham Public Schools, I think would have an impact on them actually doing something.
You have homework, too.
So thank you for considering it, because I think it could be valuable. The other topic I just want to very briefly, and if we didn't have such a wonderfully short agenda, I wouldn't be asking this question. But talk to me and us and to the public about the way you budget. And by that, I mean, I think it's public knowledge, at least I hope it's public knowledge, that there just isn't enough money to educate the children at the level of service that we have this year, okay? So we're going to be unfortunately faced with some difficult decisions. And I think the public might like to hear how you go about it. For example, do you zero-based budget? Do you start with, okay, I need to exist, okay? And after me, the next most important people are, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And eventually you get to the point where, you know, if you have to eliminate staff, you've eliminated the least important people because you've done that zero-based budgeting process. So you don't need to give us a thousand words on it. But is there one thing that you'd like to communicate to the public? Because it's a very critical issue right now for Wareham Public Schools.
I'll, I'll start. The first thing that I always look at when a budget is always the class population. I always look at population, grade level population. And by that, I begin dividing. And I create scenarios of what would this grade level look like with eight teachers? How many students would be in a classroom? Twenty-three, twenty-four? What would it look like with? And so I give those options. This is what it looked like, you know, here's with twenty students with seven teachers or here's, and so I build all of that with classroom size first. I also, we also have to look at special ed populations, especially those with our substantially separate, and look at that population and build the capacity there. So we have to look at staffing that way. Beyond that, then, for me, I look at student experience. So we begin looking at unified arts, and we begin thinking about what the child will experience through the day. What kind of supports would be needed based on, you know, what can we provide this academic year? And then finally, I look at the line items like paper pencils, like, how can we survive? You know, of course, we have heating and utility costs that come every year. They just roll. So that's there already. I don't, you know, we look at that. But for me, it's like, okay, what can I get away with with paper pencils and all of those? But those are really secondary to the number one, which is about student population and making sure that our children are getting quality education.
Thank you.
So one thing I never realized when I was on a principal is that the process for budget takes the entire school year. We talk about the budget in August. We talk about the budget in September. We present, we get, we get budgets ready. Now, this isn't the year that we're in. It's the next year. So it's an endless process.
I think.
That kills us.
Is that a complaint to the circle?
No. I mean, I see that it's needed, but I just never realized how long the process is.
And that's why we create very many scenarios. We don't know what the end result will be.
Right.
So planning is important.
So planning is very important. And similar to what Dr. Chandler is saying, you know, at the root of it all is, is the children. And we're in the business of, of educating, right? So teaching and learning. So what's going to create the best teaching and learning environment? And how can we do that and really spend the least amount of money possible that we can, can do this? And what's working? So zero-based, I guess, in a way.
Less than zero.
But we're always told, always, it's never like there's going to be a plethora of money. You can do whatever you want to do. Create a scenario that you like to create. It's always, remember, there's not going to be as much money as you had this year. So it's, it's always in our mind that we have to cut. I personally like to get the feel of my staff and see where they're at. And, and they have input into where we're going to go and what we think is best for children. And I ask them this in surveys, anonymous surveys, so that they can be truthful with me. And then ultimately, my admin team and I get together and, you know, depending on where we're at, that's how we create a budget. We, we create the ideal budget, and then it gets trimmed as we're told it needs to be trimmed. And we, ultimately, the decisions are based on what's best for the children we have in front of us. And that does change year by year on what we need.
It does change year by year?
Yeah.
The audience changes.
Really?
Yeah.
You'd think with the number of children you're talking about, hundreds and hundreds, you wouldn't think the change would be that significant. But you're saying it is.
It does. And, and we absolutely start the process of looking at class sizes. So I'll ask Dr. Chandler, what's this class look like? And, and, and she'll tell me. And I have to plan for that group coming in. But I also have to plan for the group leaving that's going to Mr. Palladino. And, and we start that discussion in October. And, and Dr. Chandler's already given me her list of, you need to plan for this, and you need to do this. And, and, and I'm doing that with Mr. Palladino. We're doing it before February vacation. He'll come and talk to the, the seventh. So it's, it's never like we're running this year, but we're always planning for next year.
Twelve months a year, yeah.
Yep. It's, it's something.
I will tell you, it's, it's the most frustrating part of the job. Because, you know, it's, it's, we base it on what the students need. And the reality is, we get what we get. And the, the tough part is, you know, you have to try and look at it and see what is going to make the students feel the least amount of kind of pain. And that's frustrating because, you know, we'd like to maintain what we have. And inevitably, I, I don't think there's been too many years that I've been principal where I've been able to maintain my level of staffing and funding for line items. And that's no one's fault. That's the system we live in. It's, you know, you're upside down before you even start the new fiscal year. So it's tough. But we try and do it based on student need, just like everyone else. And the whole process is, is really student-driven. The tough part over the last couple of years is really when we're, when we're trying to identify our needs for line items, it's very difficult because it's such a moving target on those line items. And I, I think I've done more transfers this year than I have in my previous fourteen years. And that's just because we're not increasing the budget on those items. And the cost is so much more every year that now I'm having to try and transfer to cover the needs of the classroom teachers.
So you're what's causing Kristen gray hairs.
Yeah, it's me. She knows it. I put my name on all transfer requests. But, you know, from a staffing standpoint, too, it's, 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 it's tough. Because, you know, every year, okay, where can we cut this year? Where can we cut this year? I mean, I, I've cut over thirty positions in my tenure as principal. It's, it's, it's very difficult. Because as you know, you know, once you cut a position, you're never getting it back. That science cut a few years ago is still stinging. You know, we, we are not able to offer certain science courses, computer science courses. I know we're trying to bring one back. But we had eight courses we ran a couple of years ago in computer science. And now we're just trying to be creative to bring back one. So it, it's tough. And there are courses, the students, for five years in a row, they have requested American Sign Language. And my kids are, and this year we had, you know, more than twenty-five kids in the survey request American Sign Language. And, and I, you know, I, we don't want to put it forward if, you know, it's a tease. If you can't offer it, you, you can't put it forward on the course selection process. You know, things like that, that they would love to see us have, we don't have the capacity to bring that on board. So it, it is a little frustrating. But again, just like my colleagues, we base it on, you know, what's best for the students. And at the high school, it's a little bit different because the students can kind of pick what they want to do. So we really, ours can really fluctuate from one year to the next based on student interest. But again, you know, we're looking at it, you know, we've got more kids taking online courses than ever before. That's not because kids are excited to take online courses. It's because in many cases, I don't have a place to put them. There are certain periods where there are no electives open. And it, it's because, you know, when we cut, you know, we still have to run, you know, for science, we still have to run the biology classes. We still have to run the physics, the chemistry. So what gets cut? All those computer science courses, all the electives. And then you run out of places to put kids in. And when you have kids for five years, you need quite a few electives to fill the schedule. So it, it's frustrating. We do the very best we can. Our goal is always to balance the budget so that the kids notice no difference. And, and we've been pretty successful at doing that. But there's not, in any of these buildings, a, a lot of fat, if any. That's all been trimmed many years ago. And there's not a lot of room for creativity because either we've been creative or our predecessors have been created, creative in trying to cut this budget down. The impact is going to be real. And, you know, I think parents need to know that.
Thank you very much for your candor and your thoughts.
Thank you.
Good evening, Jane. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Good.
So the night school program, we started our spring semester last. Mr. Marcus is here tonight, too. We started semester two last week. Post-COVID, because we were remote, almost two years even after COVID, we were allowed back in school. So this was our biggest enrollment since then. We had sixteen, actually seventeen, one's coming tomorrow. Seventeen new students enroll this semester. We had five who, we had two who returned from last year. We have three new that are remaining with the past. We have six new school choice for spring twenty twenty-four, which brings us to eleven school choice students this semester. We had two students.
That's a new record?
It's, it's since pre-COVID, yeah.
Is it coming from all over?
We have, yes. We have five from Bourne, two from New Bedford, one from Fall River, two from Hellman, and one from Rochester. two from Hellman, and one from Rochester. We did this semester, we really, we put the brochure in the newspaper. We tried to get, you know, into the other communities. So, yes, these numbers will increase if we could increase space, but we can't, so.
I was just going to say, what is your capacity?
Yeah.
We have, Mr. Marcus is my site coordinator.
Apparently, he just wants to stand in the back.
He does, he does. No, but we have about, what, five classrooms, I believe?
No, no, before you answer, take the mic.
We have about four or five classrooms.
Uh, yeah, five classrooms and yes.
We're in that main wing right there. So, and because our students that come to us have social-emotional issues, anxiety issues, teen mom, whatever it might be, you really want to try to keep class sizes not huge because that's one of the problems. They get intimidated. So, but pretty much, I think, we max out, the largest we have right now is what, 11, 12?
I believe 12 is our largest to the moment, which is, yeah.
But for some of our classes, we clearly could go maybe 15 for some of the classes.
But in the program itself, like the total number of students?
Right now, we have 36.
And so is that, as far as capacity in the program? Sorry.
No, go ahead. Go ahead.
I'm just curious. Like, is that, is that your capacity in the program? Or could you take more if more wanted?
We could take more, yes.
More, definitely. Because typically, like, almost every night, we, we average between 25 and 30 students in the building. So, clearly, we could probably go to 40, 50. In our heyday, we were 65, 70.
Yeah.
Cherry sheet showed, and I'm doing this from memory, but I think it was like 46. Maybe it was 42, something like that. And I'm assuming most of them are night school choice, school choices. So, you may grow from the number that you have now, correct?
Right, right.
And the school choice ones, sorry, would be the ones that fund, like, we get tuitions from, out of district for that. So, it's like a self-funded program, pretty much.
And then, so we run off of school choice, and I have two grants. One is the Mass Grad Dropout Prevention Grant, that that supports our counselor onsite, as well as we have the MyCap grant, which is a career college readiness kind of platform. And so, we've secured that. So, we, you know, I go after grants and school choice.
Now, your whole school is essentially grant-funded, correct? Is, do you feel, does that create anxiety for you? All right, stupid question. Is the level of anxiety that you have this year any worse than it has been in the past years?
No, I'm used to, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, we've been fortunate, knock on wood. But, yeah, the Mass Grad's been a great one because that's really supported having Mr. Costa, which he is great.
Yes.
And then it gives us some summer money, so it helps our students.
So, your budgeting problem is a little different than the principals because you're, you have a fairly comfortable idea of how much revenue you're going to have, but you don't, you really don't have a solid idea of the number of kids you're going to have.
Right, right. I mean, we know, we know, we, we have a base of students that we know who's going to come back to us next year because they're not ready to graduate. But we could get a student come to us, like, the 16 new ones. Some of them will graduate in June because they only need a semester, and some will be with us for three years until they graduate.
But do you have a very large fixed cost? And you just, and the grant basically pays your fixed costs and you see literally a classroom teacher as a fixed cost, and you just don't know how many students, but you try to keep it at 12 or less or something like that? Is that, have I summarized the situation accurately?
Yeah, the, the program is a 100-credit diploma program. So, 75 of those credits is core. So, we always have to have an Algebra I. We know what we have to have for staff. It stays the same every semester. Our students are coming to us with less credits than they used to. So, now we have to add extra to get them to that 100. So, we added the Thursday nights so that we are able to give them culinary arts and things like that to get them to the 100 credits.
Still sounds challenging, very challenging.
It is challenging, but it's, it's, you know, they're-
Rewarding but challenging, yes.
Yeah, they're a great bunch of kids and they deserve everything we can give them.
Sorry, Brandon, go ahead if you had something. Oh, okay.
I'm not sure we even let her finish her presentation.
It's okay. And, you know, our attendance is so different than when you're talking day school. We have a policy because it's an 18-week semester, so the students say if they're in Algebra I, they go to that class 18 times over the semester. So, they can't miss more than three classes or they're dropped.
Mr. Marcus, it's nice to have you here. Is anything else, anything you'd like to add?
Our operational philosophy in the night school is that they are choosing to come to us. And we expect these students to live up to the expectations that are set forth. And if they don't, then we make it understood that this may not be the best program for them. We want them to come to us. We will help them as best we can, but we need to make it understood that they have to show the motivation to cross that threshold each night and to join us in class.
Well, I've walked down that hallway many times when class is in session and everyone is engaged and you can tell that, you know, they want to be there.
Thank you.
And there are consequences when they don't show up?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, unfortunately, yeah.
Yeah.
Fortunately.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, I feel bad, you know, you feel bad.
Yeah.
You have to remove them. And if we remove them from one class, then they're no longer, they have to now pay for the other two classes.
But they start with motivation because they choose.
Well, we sit down with every student coming in as part of the enrollment process and we explain this to them. There's a contract they sign with us that states what the expectation is in terms of their attendance, in terms of their academic proclivities and their behavior. And we make it very clear that this is how it's going to be.
That's really interesting. Would you recommend that contract for every student in Wareham Public Schools?
I got the inspiration at a conference where I spoke with another gentleman out of Boston. He said, this has worked well for his alternative program for years. And then he offered it to me, saying, take whatever you want, adjust it accordingly, and it's been working well for us.
But what if we had it for every student? Gisella, would you sign a contract at the beginning of every year?
I believe I would.
Don't they sign their handbook?
Yeah, it's different.
Yeah.
That's a little different.
But it does outline code of conduct in the handbook.
Yeah, true.
So, it's essentially the same thing.
No, it's probably too thick. They don't read it all.
That's on them, then.
I know it's on them, but I doubt yours is this.
Two pages.
Pages, yeah.
Short, sweetened to the point.
Right to the point.
So, can I ask one more question?
Sure.
While you're here, you always have some unique offering for the students. Every year, one year it was an investment club, and so what is that this year?
Well, they, they actually stayed with us. It's this semester. They start next week. That class actually increased inside. There's 11 students in the investors' class. So, they'll do their nine weeks, and then our partner, the Mass, New Bedford Workforce, they'll do the remaining nine weeks. And then we still, and the culinary arts has like eight students this semester. They really like it.
Students were requesting to join because they enjoyed it.
Really? And is that taught in the culinary arts room in high school?
Chef Rita.
Oh, he teaches the class, too?
Yeah.
Good, that's great.
Yep. So, we're trying to get them a little bit of a taste of different things.
Thank you both.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Glad to have you here. Dr. DeAndrea.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
In your packet was, is the superintendent's newsletter. And I ask first for your approval of the bill and payroll warrant.
I moved.
Seconded.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 400.
Want to go right over to McKinny Vento?
It's up to you.
Sure. So, I, I would like to ask our finance director to speak a little bit about that Warren article, if I may.
Sure.
Good evening. So, tonight we have a Warren article for your review and for a vote. And this is essentially to appropriate the funds that came into the town for the, in FY '23, for the McKinny Vento reimbursement. And McKinny Vento is reimbursement for homeless transportation. So, these, these were funds that were actually expended by the school department in FY '22, claimed on a Department of Ed report, and then eventually sent back to the towns. So, in this case, we claimed $150,254 in homeless transportation for FY '22 expenditures, and that was 20 students. And the Department of Ed reviews all the claims, reviews the reports, and determines a reimbursement percentage, which can vary from, from year to year. In this particular year, they reimbursed it 82.45%. So, the amount that came into the town of Wareham this past July was $123,882. So, this article, and these funds are available to the school committees if they request them at a town, at town meeting, as a town meeting warrant article. Otherwise, the funds would remain with the town. And these would, any funds that we do receive, we would put in our transportation revolving fund to be used for transportation expenses. It could be some more homeless routes. It could be any, any sort of related transportation event, expenses, including, you know, maintaining the buses, maybe purchasing, if we had enough funds, purchasing a bus. So, that's, that's the history of that. So, tonight, we're just asking to get the amount that was transferred this past July to the town. I can tell you that in, we filed for FY '23 for $100,465, and that was 15 students, so we'll likely see that next summer. And then, right now, in FY '24, it's no surprise if we are tracking for $232,000 in expenditures for, right now, 21 students. And that's projected if the students that are in their routes now, and the students that have been in the routes, if they go to June 30th. The ones that the, the routes have ended because they've left or found, you know, or, or found a home, another home to go to, if we're no longer responsible, I took that into consideration. So, right now, if the year ended, if this was June 30th, we would have $232,000. So, that's up, you know, about $100,000 or more from, it is, it is.
Yes.
True. Vote on the motion. We, do we, on the, the article to go to town meeting, do we, does someone read the motion? I'm just trying, that's written on the warrant? Okay.
Just, you all said?
I just have a question.
Go for it.
The rate of reimbursement jumped up last year, right? And then it went down a little bit this year. Is there any rhyme or reason? Is that just, I don't know, but I have to ask.
Right. I, I wish I knew because over the course of, of the years, on the sheet that I went back 10 years, you know, it started in 2013 at 94%, and then it went to 50%, 34%, 36%, 37%. It hovered in the 30s. And then in FY '22, it jumped up to 100%. And last year, it went back down to 82%. So, I, I don't know the answer.
Does that mean that every town in the state got the same reimbursement percentage?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I think so.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Well, I've been around, April-
Oh, I was just going to move it if you're not ready.
I've been around long enough to remember when, I believe her name was Suzanne Bump. She was the auditor, and she, she declared this to be an unfunded mandate. And that's how we got any reimbursement at all as a result of her efforts. So, to the degree that it's less than 100%, it's actually a violation because we're being essentially charged for an unfunded mandate. Did you say 82.5%?
That's what it was, that the, we filed for $150,000 and we received $123,000.
And that's 82.5%?
82.45, yeah.
Four-five?
Yeah.
I was going to say, I was wondering if it was a coincidence that that happens to be the exact number where, no matter how rich you are, you always get at least 17.5% in school, in chapter 78. I'll assume it's just a crazy coincidence. And I think all the questions have been asked, so I'll take a motion.
I move that the town of Wareham vote to transfer $123,882 McKinny Vento revenue received in FY '23 into the school transportation revolving account at the next town meeting.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 400. Yeah, one final question. Where does the $123,000 go? What account does it end up in?
Transportation.
The transportation revolver.
Goes directly into transportation revolver?
Yes.
Okay. So, and it is therefore available for use in our FY, well, it could be this year or it could be next year, okay? But it's available for use to, to support transportation, which is an expensive part of our budget. I remember, I remember when it was less than $2 million a year. Now, it's three, close to three. Yes, anyway, that just ages me, anyway.
And one bit of information I'd like to add, it's, it's related but not totally related. We did receive notice from the state of the funds that we are eligible for, for the homeless shelters, the emergency shelter reimbursement. So, you might know that as the $104 per student per day. So, that came in, I think, last week. And we received for the period from September to December that we claimed the eligible students for $58,000. So, there'll be another data upload, another one or two throughout the year. So, I know that we've lost some students, so the, the future claims won't be as much, but that is funds that are available to support those students. And they can be carried forward in one, for one year.
Okay. And I'm about to ask a question that we could save for the budget subcommittee, if you'd like. But it has to do with, is it possible there was an error on the cherry sheets that could have been as much as $500,000 as it pertains to, what kind of students was it? You know what I'm talking about. You want to save it for the budget subcommittee? I'll leave it at your discretion.
Right. I'll, I can, I can talk about it briefly. There was, their students are in the foundation budget without getting into it too much. But you have to upload your accounts of students in pre-K, K, elementary, middle, high school. And there's also a category for what they call vocational students. And so, right now, there seems to be a, a difference in the number of vocational students. That's what they're, they're called.
Which is chapter 74, you mean?
I don't believe so. I'm not, I don't think so. I'm not sure if it's the chapter 74 students or not. It is, okay. So, the number of students over the previous year has hovered around 140, and this year-
So, this only applies to the high school?
Yes. This year, it was about 100 students less, 96 students less. So, I'm trying to verify, you know, why that happened and if there is an adjustment that needs to be made. So, I've spoken, Mr. Palladino and I just spoke about it today, as a matter of fact.
Okay. So, if that was the case, then the aid percentage, which is unfortunately down to 33 and change, would be applied to that number. So, that's, the net number would be essentially a third of the mistake. Is that a fair statement?
You know, I'm not sure how it would all flow through because it would increase the foundation budget.
Exactly.
And as it relates to everything else, I don't, I haven't like, I haven't like seen it through the whole, the whole way yet. But that is one of the-
I'll wait for the updates.
That is one thing that was noticeable, that, you know, when we look to see why we got, why it changed so much. But I can tell you that many, many districts, it was just on, on the business manager's listserv today as well, that over 200 districts just got the minimum $30 per student aid, which was $60 last year, I believe. So, of the 300-plus districts in the Commonwealth, 200-plus got the minimum and only about 100 and change got, you know, a bump like we did last year.
The chapter 70 is significant because we get reimbursed at a higher level for chapter 74 students? Is that-
I think so, between, so that there's a shift, there was a shift from, you know, more high school and less vocational students than there was in the previous. And I believe that those high school students get reimbursed at a lesser rate in the vocational. So, there's the difference.
Are you talking about students who are enrolled in a chapter 74 program at the high school?
Yes.
Not, okay.
It's the, it's the marketing.
Mark, Deco, yeah.
And so, what's happened, but there are a couple of things. We're very careful. So, the, the SIMS information, we, they get all that from SIMS. And Robin is a godsend. She knows that system so well and has to collect all the data. But the Department of Ed decided to change their whole software and how they collect the information. And so, there was a lot of- And so there was a lot of, there was a lot of errors that had never happened before across all Massachusetts. It wasn't just us, but they were all talking. Everybody was trying to fix a myriad of different things that had happened as a result of the communication and what they were used to filing versus the new system. And so we think that it wasn't, somehow there must have been something missing because we always have around 140-ish kids that are involved, right throughout, either they're in business classes or marketing. And so we're just trying to sift through all of that so that, because it was great that Kristen was able to see, you know, that one, that one inconsistency, because you can go back and see how consistent it was and then suddenly it drops, you know, like, wait a second, what's going on? And she picked it up, which was great. So we'll see how it falls out, but we have to sort of look at all the different parts that could have created the problem.
Do we, I mean, they'll have three more tries to publish the cherry sheets. So do we have to do anything on our end to make sure that they get it right?
I would, I would think so. I mean, first, I want to, you know, find out if, if that information is correct or not. And then if we found out that it is not correct, then my first thing that I would do would be to contact the person in charge of school finance at DESI and explain to him, you know, what the situation is, and then ask what now we need to do.
Is that still Jeff Wolfson?
No, it's Rob O'Donnell, or it was Jay Sullivan.
I remember Rob O'Donnell, too, yeah. They've been around for a while.
So, yes, so that's, that would be the first thing to do. And what's interesting is the number of, the combined total of high school students stayed relatively the same over the past few years, give or take a few. You know, if it drops in enrollment. And, but that, there was markedly more high school students and less vocational students from last year to this year. So that's what.
The previous year as well, it was sort of two, I think about two years updated.
Right, I went back to.
You mean there could be retroactive monies involved?
No, 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 just.
Sorry?
Yeah, so, right, correct. So it was consistently the same, the higher level of students until this year.
Got it, okay.
So something has changed, whether it's.
Okay, we'll stay tuned.
Reporting or actual.
Thank you for noticing and picking up on it. April, I didn't see any policies, are you good?
We did not have a meeting yet, so we are good on that right now.
Okay. The superintendent's budget advisory, I'm sorry.
It's next week, sorry.
Okay.
I was like, wait, what? What day is it? Who am I? I don't know.
The superintendent's budget advisory committee will be meeting. We have, the good news is we had a very productive meeting with the town administrator. And he reaffirmed that we can expect at least $1 million in additional funds for next year. Hopefully, it'll be more, but he's in the beginning of his process, or not beginning, but towards middle of the process anyway. So it, it might change. But I think he feels comfortable it will not be less than that. Is that a fair statement of what, that meeting?
I think that's a fair statement. I appreciate the opportunity, you know, to have those conversations.
Yeah, I, I think the town administrator has, has been for a while a very constructive force with the, with the school committee. We have not met with the finance committee, although they are starting their meetings with town departments. And I expect some point will be put on their schedule, but we're not yet.
Yes, we will, yeah. I'll let you know as soon as I know.
Yes, I'm sure you will. Is there any other business that people would like to bring before the committee? Seeing none?
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 400. Thank you very much.